Just be a little louder. I call this meeting of the appropriate school district board and directors to order. And I believe that the first order of business is Forrest Cooper, who is going to present the United Citizenship of Order.
How do you do that? Forrest Cooper, firm image. I run the options program. I'm here to introduce you to Taylor Carney, who has been an option since the beginning of the year. She's a junior right now. And in terms of years, she has a perfect four-point GPA, unweighted four-point GPA. It's the highest GPA in options. And she's taken some rough classes, pre-calculus, Spanish III and chemistry and proofed herself in all of them this year. She doesn't want to work. She doesn't plagiarize, which has sometimes been a problem. And puts in anywhere between 15 and 23 hours a week, including 19 hours during spring break, getting her work done. So I know she's a hard worker. Will complete all requirements for graduation by June. And I mentioned she's a junior. Currently, she's working ahead of schedule for that. She, I'm proud to present Taylor as part of our citizen.
Can I take a picture with it? Okay. Do you want to stand up or do you want to stay right there? That works.
Congratulations. Would you now be able to look at your hand?
I suppose. The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see, looks like Mary Joey, 90 by 30. And I got the little doctor. Oh, hi. Well, thank you for your time. It's nice to be here. Laura Dachter, I'm very good away. I'm in the low tide here. Oh, my. I'm talking a little bit about 90 by 30. I'll start with its childhood use. Any area we do the education law. Okay. It's childhood use prevention month. And you've seen the blue pinwheel around now. And that's kind of a national thing, the category of childhood use prevention month. And more locally, this 90 by 30 centered out below in our county. And we basically, the 90 by 30 is about producing child abuse by 90% by country service, which is aspirational. And so we've been in the process, but we, within Lang County, the feeling is that a connected child is a protective child. And there's less likely to be a, this is one of the main things. And the 90 by 30 programs have divided the county into sectors, where there are volunteer implemented programs to help get information about those poor parents. Laura is going to talk a little bit.
I've been on the North Lane Regional Teams since, I think I started in 2013, when they were first forming the teams. And the first thing we did was surveys. We got 183 surveys from the area to just find out what the attitudes were. And from there, we went to asset mapping, where we were looking at all the supports that were in place for parents already. And then looking through the gaps and the holes and where we could maybe find programs that we could build in. And then, oh, that included an inventory and assets. And then we worked on a strategic plan of programs that we could use to fill in those gaps. And so it's been a building process for many years. And we're okay. And one of the programs that we started is the Roots of Empathy Program. And I was trained as an instructor. And the model is to bring a baby into classrooms, either K-1, 2, although it's also a program that can be done in upper grade, up through middle school. And we had to do it one year. And the second year, we started feeling it was the year of COVID. And I did also present it online last year. And I found it was harder to connect with the kids. But then when I got to stuff in that classroom, it felt like, wow, we were good friends and they were so thrilled to see their baby, even online, on, as in, at Zoom meeting. And so the program is to build empathy in kids. And it's really well researched. It's really well planned so that it follows the baby's development. And I think it also works really well as avoiding teen pregnancy. Because I really see, even at these person, I can really see all the responsibilities that parents have with their babies. And so this is one of our projects that we bring to the classroom and compare to a real baby when we can.
And sometimes we bring, oh, we're bringing real babies. And that's the baby, the real baby is coming from this one. That's my, I haven't had a doll in a long time. Some other programs, we've been, since this, and the COVID, we switched into the baby bundles because people are isolated. Where we, any, if a parent is the community, who wants to reach out to us online, we'll bring them a bundle of supplies and information about the baby. We have a whole notebook of community resources. And, you know, it has some clothes and thermometers and plenty of no-halble stuff, as well as then the key, the cornerstone of our message when we deliver the bundles. And some of them were outdoors. A lot of them, all of them are outdoors, actually, have been anyway. I didn't even allow, but yeah, I've always been outdoors. Is, to talk about this, the moments when the babies are little, when they can be extremely, when you, basically as a parent, you reach your limit. The baby's unhappy. It's normal for the baby to get unhappy. I give this field to anyone I see who's wanting to talk to the community. And then potentially, if you can't console the baby, it's really in your head. Put the baby down someplace, think, and go take care of yourself. And then we, you know, never take a baby. But, you know, just really giving people permission that if you reach the moment, that's what you need to do. Just put the baby down, the baby will be fine for a few minutes. Take care of yourself. And we're also, another program where, all the programs are dead by now, we're thirty. And we're kind of, we're close, we're going to try and do here. We're looking into a parent therapy program. I sent them a little bit of information about that. We get enough volunteers and interest, we'll probably do that with parents for each other. And I'm always interested in communicating about what other people think are the right kinds of programs to bring in to support social motherhood of children. We can engage all of them in some way or another. That is our primary message. If you have any questions, if you want. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mary Jo.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, just an announcement, a reminder that this week is May 2nd. So two weeks from today is our future appreciation week. We started planning some things, but just to get it out of your radar. We're doing quite recognizing our certified staff.
Okay. So first up is the Fernbridge Education Association.
Hi, bye. Thanks for setting time aside for me. I'm Fred Hudson, and I teach at my school. And I'm our, for your presence this year. So I'm here tonight just to, welcome to whoever our new board member is. And to thank all of you for your dedication and service to us. We're appreciative of the support the school board has provided the past two years. And over the past two years, together, Freya, Gary, and school board. And they created and thoughtful about solving problems, solving problems that we never imagined encountering. So Freya's thankful for being included in the decisions, discussions, and appreciates that we have a voice in the decisions of the people or our district. The fact that we have had school every day this year is a testament to the administration's dedication to our community, our students, and employees in the district. And so Freya looks forward to continuing our work with district and fostering our relationship with the administration and the school boards this year. Thank you.
Good job.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
This is my friend, Sherri Cooper. And I'm the Boise A Chapter Certified President and thanks for letting me come with you. Being part of the school district during COVID, it's been quite a journey. It's been a tough two years, a lot of communication with the district and probably more memorandums than we've ever had. The class might have a wide variety of jocks and people. Some are, some of the jocks have not been filled, some have changed during the pandemic. It has been a challenge to our membership, some are weary and burned out. But we appreciate partnership with the board and the district as we continue to work on these problems such as custodial workload and competition, returning unvaccinated workers and naked patients. We feel the support from you and superintendent carpenters as we journey these problems. The retention bonuses, helping working with administrators, bonus grants, and flexibility on employee schedules has shown great care for us. We look forward to working together as we adapt to future changes in state guidance, such as masking and social distancing, retaining and attracting classified employees, and working out all the issues that continually may come up. The board does not forget positive feedbacks from visitors, especially during this time. But we want to thank you very much for your support and partnership as we keep Fernbridge a great place to live and work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri.
And I, just on a semi-personal note, I want to thank Sherri and Forrest Cooper, as well as Ian Cooper, Jessica Coon, and Mr. Ken Best for helping me pull off the regional 912 OB term this Saturday. None of the participants knew how, how fly by the seat of our pants our fans would work. But, and I just really wanted to say thank you so very much. You are, you're pretty amazing folks.
Thank you very much for your support of OB in the district and your willingness to take on regional management.
Yeah. I'm hoping, I'm hoping I dodge that bullet next year. If we had a question, I have to. We did, oh, okay. Well, then we'll move on to the approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 14th, 2022. That says presented.
Hello, second. It's been moved and seconded, game, come, this way. All in favor? Or here? And now, business office presentation.
Thanks, Michelle. Can everyone hear me? Can everyone hear me? Can you not hear me? I, I can't hear you and you can't hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, I can hear you now. We got it, Michelle. I couldn't hear you guys and you couldn't hear me. I don't think you could, could you?
No.
No, okay. Michelle, could you bring up that enrollment? Thank you. So unfortunately, we are down another six students from last month. We're down about 44 students from this time last year. Where we're down at is about 20 students at elementary level, 16 at, excuse me, 20 at elementary, 28 at middle school, and 56 at the high school. We're just trying to monitor that closely and hopefully the numbers start going up. Gary, did you have anything to say about the enrollment report?
Um, no, just that, you know, statewide, K-12 publication, public schools are down almost 32,000 students. Kind of like state average.
Yeah, I think we're in line with other districts. Every, you know, all districts are definitely down.
The one positive is that, remember, the state school funding number doesn't change. So when we're down kids, there's more money across the state for fewer kids. Our per pupil dollar amount goes up, definitely doesn't recover all of it. But I, hopefully, as COVID and COVID restrictions start to go away, and a little starts to return to where we expected to be. We're in the process of doing lots of kindergarten engagement. You'll probably be hearing about that in the next few weeks. That'll be your real part number for us, is how many incoming kids are still.
Thanks, Gary. I can move on to the financial report. All right, this is the general fund revenue and expenditure financial report as of March 31st. Revenues are coming in as projected. We received our first common school fund payment. That comes in two payments throughout the year. And it was 17% higher than was originally projected. That is part of our local revenue formula. So, you know, it just ends up washing out in the state school fund in the end. We've received 90% of our budgeted revenue. We've spent 56% of our operating expenditures. March payroll was a little bit higher than normal due to triple pay option. Other than that, everything's pretty much normal as is. Does anyone have any, does any school board members have any questions on the financials at all?
Not yet.
Nothing too abnormal going on.
So we need a motion if we don't have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? No. Then all in favor, say aye. Four zero. Lisa, please, you are up. Is it me or? The elementary. Perfect. And so this for a slide here, teamwork, making the dream work. It cannot be more of an act description of what's going on. We need elementary this year. Everyone has just worked together to make it work daily. I call in at about seven o'clock in the morning, 6:45 as I'm driving in, and we deal with the absences because we're at short subs for IAs, for teachers. And whoever's the secretary that day holds schedules and we just start highlighting duties that need to be filled. And as people walk through the office, everyone knows to ask what needs to be done today. And it truly is just a year of teamwork. We have never had someone refuse to help us out. We don't even have to go asking. People just come and offer. Without that, I'm not sure what this year would be like. But I think it's drawn us all a lot closer. Isn't that a cool photo? Sorry, it was on Facebook. I'm not really fond of the Christmas tree being there, but it was a cool photo of that. Okay, by the numbers, we're at 315 students right now. From 280 to the beginning of September, so we've come up about 33 students. We have 13 gen ed classrooms and then SLC, 21 certified staff, 21 classified custodial kitchen. And we have a couple of unfilled positions. And we have two classified substitutes. They're retired from the district and they don't really want to be working. They like being retired and would love to sleep in. But they come every day that they can to help us out. And they're doing it just so that we can keep running groups for kids and doing what we need to do. The unfilled physicians are temporary physicians and people don't tend to want to have those temporary positions. They don't come with insurance. They don't come with any, any longevity. Okay, here's our population growth this year. One thing you're going to want to notice. So kindergarten needs to stay pretty much the same. First grade, these nine students, the unfortunate thing about this and third grade also, first grade mainly though, when we get new first graders, they often not come to school in kindergarten. Right, they're kids who have been to their homeschool. They've gone to options and they haven't participated a lot in options. And so every time a first grader comes, for the most part, wherever we create new groups for them. You know, we got, we got two kids, two first graders in in January, didn't know any letter sounds. So you create a group for them so that they can learn what S even is, you know? Just got another one after spring break. No idea of any letter sounds, nothing. And so we have to create a whole other group, get those kids going. So when you look at the EDCBM numbers, which I'm going to show you in just a minute, you'll see why I'm pretty proud of first grade. So go ahead. First of all, I went back and I looked at my board report from 2018, 19. It was the last time we had a really typical year, for a full year. And these were, here we do EDCBM benchmarking. So we give the kids tests in reading, several different areas of reading, and then in math. And these were the kids who are at benchmark, okay, where they're supposed to be. When they come in in the fall, the winter, we do a spring one also. But in the board report, we just generally show those two because we haven't done the spring one yet. So go to the next slide. So this was, I didn't have the 1921 because we didn't do a board report in 20 because we were in the throes of COVID, not sure what was going on. So this was the 2021 EDCBM benchmarking. Yeah, it was, it was pretty abysmal. One thing, when you look down here, these fourth and fifth grade tests were often done at home virtually, just assigned to the kids. So we really don't have any idea whether that data was accurate or not. Absolutely no. But these ones, we can tell you were accurate because these are done one-on-one, in person, or on the screen. And then go ahead to this here. So you can see that we've come back up. So we're almost back up to what we were before this whole, whole thing started. This is the part that I want, that I'm super proud of. So in first grade, I mean, it doesn't look like we'd be proud of 44%, but in first grade, they start off and fall with certain measures. And then they get new measures, word reading, tells that word reading they get. And so it always drops them down because it's a new test in January. So this year, for the first time in forever, it actually went up in my chart. So although the 44% doesn't look fantastic, it's above what it even was back before we had this. We have given every resource we can to first grade teachers because kindergarten was a rough year for those kids during COVID. Some came, some didn't. There wasn't, you know, there weren't full days. So whenever we have extra time of anyone they know who heads to kindergarten, the kindergarten teachers have different packets. And they just hand whoever comes in a packet. That teacher, that A, will take a couple of kids and they'll just start working on things from where the packet tells them to go from. And so Casey Cuthbert and Andrew Peabody are to be commended for what they're doing this year. And then the next one, go ahead, is just EDCBM math data. And I did not have the 19, the 2021 in my board report. So I won't install these from board reports. But you can see in the math data, they were almost back, we're still a little bit low, but we're almost back to what we were before this whole thing happened. It just kind of went back, started looking at data. It made me feel good and I bet you guys might want to know that we're just about back to where we should be. Okay, so social emotional learning has been a big thing for ODE during COVID and after, trying to get kids back in integrated. These are just three of the pieces of guidance from ODE. But the prioritizing care, connection, and community, devoting time and space and opportunities throughout the year for students and staff to connect and build relationships, and to give class time for students and staff to make sense of the experiences they've had. So a couple of things that we've done, go ahead to the next slide. Ashley Fisher, new this year, she's a counselor. She spends her time at Elmira and Bonita, splits her time. She meets weekly with small groups. Teachers choose kids, they think would fit into those groups. Right now, she has a grief group, family change group, making friends group. She's had an anxiety group. And it's really helped these kids to work through some of the struggles that they've been through, in addition to normal struggles that kids go through. Our master schedule, as I did last year, sets aside 30 minutes for SEL. And so that can be formal SEL, like second steps curriculum, bullying prevention curriculum. It can also be class circles. It could be art. It could be music. It could be whatever is going to help those kids create relationships, get back into the swing of things. So the next few slides are pictures of what this looks like, what this 30 minutes can look like. So this was an SEL in fourth grade. And the lesson, they were asked to write what they loved about their classroom. And some of these are just lovely. What I love about our classroom is it's like home. I love this class because everybody is kind. Everyone is always trying their best. And all the great people in it. And then on the outside of their classroom, go ahead to the next slide, that's what I love about me. Something I love about myself is my positivity. I love my singing voice. And the thing I love about me is I'm kind. So these kids are just really encouraged to find the positives in themselves and their class. Here are some other examples. This is kindergarten. This is the second steps curriculum, social emotional curriculum. This is a safety curriculum over on that side that the teacher's teaching. And then these are just some artwork that were done in kindergarten. Next one. So this is second grade involved in circles. So they had to go through and they were doing rock, paper, scissors and telling something they liked about each other. And you can see they have a compliment chart here. This is a circle also in fifth grade. They go circle every morning with a certain theme. Jen Senate and Amy Humphrey are doing music right now after the rest of the year at Bonita. They do 30 minutes per classroom every other week. And then these are just some social emotional, excuse me, some second steps, SEL lessons, responsibility, and dealing with peer pressure. So this is what it would look like, very varied, but what it looks like for 30 minutes in every classroom at Bonita. Okay, so the other part of that was staff with social emotional activities. And we have a couple of staff members, Becca Hovey and Andrew Peabody, who put together SEL lessons for us each, during each staff meeting. And they started out being pretty serious and kind of blow it pretty cheap. And we started making them into games. And so they started coming up with activities. And everyone just loves these now. This was one where we had to all come up with an acrostic with our names. So click to the next one. These are all in the, in the main hallway. So these are just some of them. And we had to describe ourselves using the letters on our name. And we had to describe ourselves using the letters on our name. We have, I love Casey Cuttsworth Humphrey. That is Casey Cuttsworth. This one, Deanna and Jeff Green, by the way, yeah, they were like babies. But exhausted. You know, I think everyone's feeling that. But it was interesting to see that. Okay, go to the next one. This was this past month's, these are resumes. So we got together in groups of four or five and we did create a group resume. And this is all funny stuff, right? So professional objective to survive. Work experience, some of these, I was on this one, 73 years in education. It's because like three quarters of them were mine. You know, skills, eyes and back for heads. Skills being a ray of sunshine, tying other people's shoes, can hold bladder for hours. We just had a great time creating these, just laughed ourselves silly. Another activity that we did one month was, we got in groups of four or five and had to decide what other three staff members we would want with us in a zombie apocalypse. And there were some great discussions. Most people wanted old people like me so that they can get eaten first. I can't run as fast, just super discomforting. Okay, and then here's an SEL survey. They've been doing several of these. And the takeaway from me on this is just basically how are things for you at work? Super basic. One was things are stellar, they're great. Ten, I don't want to be here ever in my life. And so at the beginning of the year, October, we had several people in the six, seven, eight, nine. By February, they were pretty much cleared out and in the better half there. So we felt good about that movement. Staff professional development. So we're getting back into professional development. Kind of took, not a total break permit, but we're getting back to normal. So we're still doing PLCs, we're doing three times monthly. Remember, those are professional learning communities for the teachers from EES and VES meet together. We've been working on math for the past few years. We're going on to ELA now, language arts. We've been doing PLC work time. We have one teacher per grade level, meeting together five times during the school year. Our classified staff are doing twice monthly meetings with a consortium from U of O where they're talking about problems and solutions that they have to common issues at school. I've been meeting with mentor administrator once a month. And then I also meet once a month with five other administrators from around the state. And we just talked about what's going on in our schools. We have, we're sending several teachers to the RPI, intervention conference. And then we've been dealing with ELA adoption that you're going to hear about a little bit later. So normal activities. We have, they're getting back to normal. It's kind of this weird time where some things are now in person because all of a sudden we can. Some things are still virtual. So artists and residents, we're back to that and they are in person. We have Kelly Tippado right now at our school doing fiddling. We have a glass, a woman coming to do glass feasting in May. Birthday celebration, first time we've had it back in two years. And it's very small. We only have, I think, six or seven people, six or seven groups who were willing to come. But that will be this Thursday, so from the gym. Our talent show will be back in person, which is going to be exciting. Our readathon is back. It'll be at home, but it's back. OBO was virtual. Architects in the School Program. We had one architect who was willing to come in person and one who wanted to be virtual. So again, it's just this balance of both, giving the kids the experiences. Our assemblies so far have only been virtual. Title Family Nights, the first one was virtual. This one coming up is going to be in person. Fifth grade at First Bowl, we were in the snow and the mud last week. It was brutal. It was 37 degrees tomorrow when we started. And the kids loved it, not sure why, but they had a good time. And then we were back in person with the community tree lighting that's held at Bonita and the Easter egg hunt. I didn't go to the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, but I heard it was well attended. Did anyone hear?
Not 90%.
Yeah, it was, and people just raved about it. Keep going. Howls, just a shout out to them. They've done three fundraisers so far this year. They've raised $39,000 in those three fundraisers. And just huge kudos to them because they have dealt with these regulations. We have some vaccinated, some unvaccinated, some staff members. And they just keep plugging away and working through it. So they did an outside fundraiser in the fall because that's what they could do, right? They, they knew that there were regulations coming up and so they held it out there, raised $11,000. They then tried to figure out what they could do because they couldn't come in the classrooms. So then they reached out to countryside and did a pizza fundraiser that didn't involve anything at the school building. So they were able to raise money that way. And then when everything just kind of opened back up for evenings, they had a shindig of a luau. And you can see, this is Mr. Green dancing the luau right there. And Mrs. Green, we had a lot of teachers show up. And they just had a group.
Was this the auction?
This is the auction, yeah, cool. And yeah, thank you guys so much. Crazy year. Wasn't sure that we were going to be making it in the middle of the year. We had so many COVID absences with staff, students. And it seemed like every day we were having to make everything up. And just thank you so much for your support. Yeah, any questions? Comments?
Well, I, I, you're doing a fabulous job, you and your, and all the staff in your building.
Any questions for any of us?
Should we get a link to you doing the luau?
It's on Facebook.
It was really good.
Yeah.
Ah, looks like.
Yeah, I think that's me. So one thing that we talked about is that we'll have kind of a standing line item where I'll just give you guys an update because there seems to be a lot happening. And it's the easiest way to always get a little bit of talk time. So I'll share a couple of things and then we have a couple of board action things. So I guess the first thing, just so you know, I just completed and submitted our quarter three SIA report to an investment account. And what that looks like is you, all of the things that were funded, all of our activities, you update your budget, you say how it's going, is it in progress or you having issues? And then you do some journaling questions. And that was, I submitted it last week and it was already accepted and approved. So that's excellent. The next thing I did, I just closed the community input and engagement survey. We had 209 responses, which is pretty good. It's community, staff, families, parents. And so I'm hoping that next month I'll kind of give you guys a general update from that, of the results. And that just kind of helps guide the planning for SIA the next two years and one-time spending activities that are important to people, ideas that are important to people. How are people feeling about communication? How are they feeling about the work that we're doing with these funds? I also did a student engagement survey with the high school students and got 193 responses. So that was, that was super fun because the way I did that was I bribed them. And I had Mr. Gardner provided during homeroom time. So he swatted his time for it to happen. And then if they completed it, they could come to me at their lunch and spin a wheel and get a prize. So it was pretty cute. They would come and they'd be like, I think I did it. Like, wow, they don't have me on my list. And so they'd pop over with their Chromebook and go do it. So that one, you know, I'm, I'll kind of, it's a similar survey. So I'll try to get their survey data all together as well. That closed last week. The next thing on my list is ESAR, which is the federal dollars that we have. And that was supposed to be due this Friday, the annual data collection report, which is massive. We look at our remaining funds from ESAR one, two, and three, what's left, and then a breakdown of where we're going to spend those dollars. Student health and wellness, responding to COVID, improving academics. You know, you have to break it down. You have to have an integrated plan where you list each activity, how it's going to happen, how you're going to engage it. But I just got an email this morning that that got pushed out too many sticks. So not that I wouldn't have had it done by this Friday. I'm very, it was probably like the highlight of my year to know that I've got some more time there. So I'll, I'll be working on that and I'll give you guys updates on that as well. The next thing is some of these ESAR dollars we're using for capital expenditures. Two of the things that we were waiting for approval, just so that you guys have a heads up, is a write-on vacuum for the average middle school custodial team. And that just, when you do these capital expenditures, you have to tie it back to student learning. Why is it important to your school? And by our custodial team having that write-on vacuum, it saves time, it helps the carpets get cleaner, all of these different things. So that's one thing that we're waiting for. ODE, I was in a meeting last week and they told me it was approved, but we haven't got it officially yet. And then another thing that's happening is the PA system is going to be replaced by high school, which helps with kind of outdoor communication and supports some outdoor events. So those are two things that are happening. The next big thing that's happening, lots of work happening at the middle school, elementary, high school level is summer programming. So the state has allocated a lot of dollars towards unfinished learning and extended learning opportunities. And we're having summer programs at all the levels. I just submitted that application today. Not a ton of report there, except that everybody's working really hard. And then we'll also have our kids in transition to school program, which is kind of our red shirt kindergarten, which this will be our sixth year doing that. And then the final kind of item to give you an update is we're, the district, we already completed as an admin team the Oregon Integrated Systems Framework. And it's kind of like a needs assessment for your entire district. And then each building right now is completing their own building level one. So that'll help us when we make our school-wide improvement plans or our continuous improvement plans. It's just, it's kind of your leadership team looks at a couple of different categories. Leadership, talent development, stakeholder engagement and partnerships, well-rounded coordinated learning principles and inclusive practice and policy. And you kind of rate yourself through, through these different categories. And then you make goals based on that. So that's kind of all the stuff that we're working on right now. And then now we're onto board action. We have more capital projects. So in ESAR, if you have something that's over $25,000, it has to be presented to you guys. So that's definitely something that you'll probably have coming up in the future. If it's more than $25,000, our district must engage with the school board to review and approve the expenditure. So we have one item that I want to write up if you guys are in approval of it. And it's improving our HVAC system at the middle school and the high school. As you know, and our community is very well aware, that our HVAC system has just been a beast this year. It, it seems like everything that could go wrong has gone wrong with it. The dollars that we put into it, it kind of just dominoes. And one of the things that's happened is the system's out of date and the software is out of date. And we've got, I don't want to go into a ton of detail, but we have these air handler units that you can't get replacement parts for. So we're literally having to buy them on eBay and get them repaired. And so it's, it's been a real challenge. And other districts that have this product are also doing the same thing. So one of the things that we were working on is having somebody come in, look at the systems at the middle school and the high school. I think we have 42 of these air handler units, ventilation things, dampers. I learned a lot about that track and throughout a lot of language. We have 42 of them. And what they'll do is they'll come in and they'll retrofit them, replace them, and then give us a new software. It's probably going to be about $80,000. Yeah, it's huge for both schools. It'll, yeah, middle school and high school. It'll be a pretty intense project. We've had one company kind of come through and look at that system and that process. And then we'll probably reach out to a couple more. We have to do a request for proposal, not a request for quote. So we have to, you know, we'll get a couple more, but it is going to be significant. And so that's something that I do need your approval for. If you have any more questions, I can try to answer them.
Is there a lifetime expectancy once they're repaired?
No. That is definitely something that I learned about too, is that each of these products, they have an expectancy of 15 to 20 years. Most of them are 10 to 15 and ours are all over. Right now, every single unit and software that we have is over the expectancy. So I think it would be good for another 15 to 20 years if you take good care of it. And that's kind of where we're at with a lot of them is 20 years right now. I would assume they have some sort of insurance at one point.
This is where my, this is a form we write up, send to OD. And they, this is our ESAR three allotment. So our ESAR three funds for our school district was around $3.6 million. I don't know how much we've spent, but we have next three years to spend if it's on the fall of 2024. So about two and a half years. What Michelle's asking for is just the ability, you know, your approval that, yeah, we're going to get this all written up. Type it to COVID, this is going to help building our quality buildings. Submit it, they'll prove it. We know they'll approve, but this is directly tied. And then we can go process it, get a quote and probably have it done this summer hopefully, depending on parts.
Is there something we would be giving out to, like another project that we would be to give out to the?
No, we're, I mean, you could maybe describe. We're hoping that right now we have to have this money spent by September of 2024. So just over two years. We're hoping that gets extended here because frankly, it's, it's hard to spend $3 million in two years for, for things that are directly tied to COVID. HVAC is one that A is expensive and B is directly tied. So, you know, we're going to spend it, but we have to hope it gets extended so we can be more planned. We'll take more time to spend this money than, you know, it's, it's a challenge to spend it in a plentiful way.
And the way that we're making those decisions is I've looked at the long-range planning facility thing, work that we've done there. So looking at those really big ticket items. I may use all of the survey data that we're getting. What, what can we do with SIA, which we know is ongoing dollars? What are things that are like one-time expenses that we could tie to ESAR? The questions that you have to answer, you have to give a description. You have to talk about the percentage of students and staff impacted. You have to talk about whether or not it directly impacts historically underserved students and then explain how. You have to talk about who's involved in the decision-making, short-term and long-term effects. And then why is it important now compared to other times? So like every dollar that you spend is challenging. You want to make sure it's really thoughtful and thankful and.
And around facilities, this item will be the 14th thing we've submitted and gotten approved. So I've got 11 approved. We have two we're waiting on that Ms. Marshall described, the vacuum. The Abner P A High School, so we're talking about indoor P A, football stadium track. And this will be the 14th. When they first started this program, they didn't have this criteria of board rule. So some things, a couple, not a lot, but a couple that have already been over $25,000. For example, I think of, you know, turning at the middle school in Columbus because we wanted more concrete space to be able to expand lunch tables more, less carpet. That whole, you know, carpeted area is now on polished concrete. I don't remember what the total cost was, but it was more than $25,000. And then about a few months ago, they not only gave a new form that described a lot more in-depth questions that Ms. Marshall just went over, but put this $25,000 threshold to do board approval.
That was Bonita's because Elmira was a new school.
Yeah, and it's interesting because of Bonita is their own, they're separate units. So each classroom has their own separate thermostat. So it's, right now what's happening is we've got these massive systems that can't communicate to each other. So we haven't really had any major problems at Bonita. I think sometimes it's like more of a thermostat issue versus. I mean, there's, there's so many things about facilities that I don't want to know. But like our software is out of date, so we can't update the software. So you have to go in and kind of work around it and it's just, it's really interesting. It's been really fun and I really hope that the HVAC thing helps to make it better.
And saving.
A capital project?
Yeah. Or continue beyond the H VAC capital part.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All in papers, say aye. Four, zero.
Okay, so then eleven B two is kind of all the S R stuff that I just talked about, so I don't need to go into that. The next thing I am hoping to get some board action on is our E L A curriculum adoption. I have this in paper too, if anybody wants it, or if you guys would rather look at it on paper, but Michelle can go through it for me. And I'm not gonna read everything. This is just a PowerPoint that I put out to the public for community input. Here's our team. We've had a, a pretty big group of people at the K five level. And you know, there's a lot of investment when it's your classroom and every teacher teaches it. So you get a lot of elementary folks that wanna do it, and then the middle school and high school teams are, they're departments. So they just have a couple reps. I will say that the middle school and high school have been fantastic at going back and sharing with their departments and bringing them in for input. So I feel like they did a great job representing their areas. So then with the process, it looks like we, we did a lot of team collaboration. We worked as a K five team and a six twelve team. And we really made sure that we were all on the same page for what we were looking for, what was important to our staff, what's important to O D E. Really talked about the priorities in aligning our, our K twelve program as a whole. And then there's a lot of hot links in here that if you're really into curriculum, you can go through and look at approved curriculum, you can look at the rating scales. O D E has a very intensive process for even approving curriculum. So that was one of my non-ophospholes, was that I said that we were not going to go off the list. We were sticking to an approved curriculum. So and everybody was okay with that. We did a lot of work. We, I won't teach you guys all about the theory of reading and literacy knowledge, but we talked, we did a lot of work around this so that everybody was on the same page and understood the process of how kids learn to read and how it changes over time. And this was again, just our vision. We wanted to make sure that we were aligning our grade bands. We wanted to make sure that there was a strong writing curriculum component, and that was especially at the middle school and high school level. They really felt the need for that. We were really looking for a multi-tiered system so that they had all of the pieces. We don't, what we don't want is this, okay, here's our curriculum, but you have to go out and find fifty other things to do what you need to do. So we really looked through the curriculums for that. We wanted it to be culturally relevant. And Language Arts P L Ts, what'll happen is like what Lisa talked to a little bit, they'll dig in a lot deeper over the next few years. The work that they did, just so that you guys understand, I mean, there's so much when it comes to curriculum. Just K five, there were fifteen programs to look through on that list, and it's not just a book, it's like an entire kit. Six eight had ten different approved curriculums and nine twelve had ten different approved programs. So what we did was, we came together as teams, we set aside time at Laney S D so that we could go and look at every single approved program, narrowed it down. We used the Ed Reports score group bricks, we used O D E's score group bricks. We looked at virtual caravan videos, publisher presentations. And then they came together as teams and talked about strengths, weaknesses, questions, concerns. There was just a lot of like really trying to dig deep. So our first step was to get it narrowed down. It was just too much. So we were able to take those fifteen programs at K five and get down to our top three. And at that, that was kind of again, one of the things I just, this is where we need to start. We've got to narrow this down to three, so and then do more work there. So we all got narrowed down to three. And then what, the slide just shows you what was offered, the three that we chose. And Benchmark Education, McGraw-Hill and Savvas Learning were our top three at elementary. At middle school, it was Carnegie, H M H and Savvas Learning. And nine twelve, it was Carnegie, H M H and Savvas Learning. And you would think that right there, here in Savvas, 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 that was like my dream, like, oh my gosh, we could have the same thing, K twelve. It didn't happen. Because once, once you get down into those and you start really looking for what's important for each level, you can, you see where publishers, they have their niche, you know, and then they expand and so that they can kind of sell to you, but then when you really start looking, it's hard. So once we got down to our top three, we had additional visits to Laney S D. We ordered sample kits here. We reviewed online materials and resources. We set up publisher presentations. They had access to caravan videos, and then that's when they also took it back to their teachers and departments. So instead of going, there were seven programs, they said, here's our top three. And really, most groups have their top two by then. And so then from there, we went with, what is the best that we can get for the dollars that we have that fits all of these checkboxes? And K five went with wonders, six eight went with H M H and nine twelve was Savvas. And so then the next step for me was I put this presentation online, asked for community input. We got three responses. One said nothing to say. One had some really great questions that I wish I could like reach out to that person individually, but they didn't leave any contact information. And then the third one said, looks great. So that was all that we got as far as community input. I offered to have people call me, come in, look at samples. I put up links to samples. So now we're just kind of looking to the board to approve, and then I'll start planning for purchasing and professional development. And then this was all the information that people could access to learn more about the programs. I feel good about it. We get to go through this process again for math next year. So I'll, I'll probably do a very similar format of working together, K twelve for our first initial meeting, give us all on the same page, and then break into K five, six, twelve. If you have any questions, E L A adoption.
I'm going to move to adopt the English language curriculum as proposed.
A second. It has been moved in second. Any more discussion? All in papers, say aye. Four, zero. Thank you very much, Michelle. All right, superintendent's report.
Few things to go over. I will be quick. First of all, this was just to thank the O B O people, but you already did that in the high school group. Maybe that's why they talked about the weekend before at elementary.
Yeah, well, we have the V E S team in one room, the E E S team in a different room, assuming was their regions, because they were in different regions. And V E S team came within a couple points of going on, but didn't. The E E S team had a, the same score, but in their region, that score went on. And so they were able to compete in the afternoon one time. Everyone had a great time. Janet Baker did a nice job of leading both schools. So it was, it was good. It was an adventure, you know, the whole virtual part of it. It was, yeah, it was pretty crazy. We had to do a lot of setup. I'm sure you did too. The teams had to be seen, but then they had to have, but first their coach behind them, the books in the bag had to be behind them on screen.
Yeah, lots of rules, lots of rules.
Okay, next thing I want to touch base on was, you'll be hearing about over the next month, six, eight weeks, Parent Square. So Parent Square is a communications platform that we're looking to do about. You know, often, despite the ways that we try to get out information here from folks, well, I didn't get that, I didn't hear that. I wanna be communicated, but this way, not that way. It's hard. When we go to put out a piece of information, we can mail it, and then if we decide, well, it's also good for the website, we can do it there. And then I gotta get somebody else to do a phone dialer, engage with somebody else to put on the website, another way to get it on the social media, to email it to people. So what this platform allows us to do, it'll be, you know, web-based, but parents will be able to have an app. And Gary, so he logs into the system, and I put out a piece of information, school's close today, I C roads. Well, it'll go out to a mark parent as an email, as a text, as a phone call. If he's, Mark is registered in our system, is wanting to be communicated with in Spanish, they'll, they get sent to him in Spanish. All of it, a lot of social media, it'll get posted to our website just from this one thing, it was before. And if I was just doing that myself, to engage with all those things could take a half hour. And then as a parent, it's, you need to opt it out. So first, once we get this up and running, over the next month, we're getting the system tied to all of our systems. It'll tie to our student information system, so we'll have all our data. It'll tie to our website, it'll tie to our social media, it'll tie to our phone dialer, it'll tie to our email. And once that gets all set up, we'll probably start at small scale. And then parent Jackie, the first time this happens, she's gonna get all this, well, instructor, you know, login. And then she can say, no, I don't wanna get a phone call, I don't wanna get, just text me every time. And now that's the only way she's gonna be communicated with. And it'll go, it's not just from district level stuff, but all the way down to the classroom teacher. Classroom teacher, hey, Miss Johnny, today in class, boom, just text to that parent. Their way of understandable work is, parent has their app on the phone, open it up, and it's just like their own, it's like a little Facebook, like a little, you know, communication center where apparently that all the communications is just specific to them or their children, and their multiple children. So lots to learn about this, but just know we're moving this way with the hope that it becomes an easier way for parents to engage and keep that there for them. So stay tuned for that over the next couple months. I wanna let you know, high school prom's set for the thirtieth, it's at the U of O. They're doing the prom safety assembly on the twenty-eighth, the leadership class. They might have finalized it today, but they're in the process of finalizing what the prom safety assembly will look like. Once they get that solid, it'll get it informed out to parents. As I mentioned to you in one of my weekly updates, we just finished our S R title audit. It went really well. I don't know how many things they checked us on, a hundred. We have four or five things we need to follow up on, there are all minor things. A copy of the transportation form on the link on our website. We'll be doing that over the course of the next month, and I'll issue this a final. Good to go, seal approval. I'll keep you posted on that. The distinguished service awards, I think most of you know that just occurred last week. And I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the people that we recognized at that ceremony. Our Tweedle A Morton, Educational Excellence, Distinguished Teacher of the Year, Rebecca Howie, a teacher from Benita Elementary. Our distinguished classified employee was Casey Anderson from the middle school. Our administrator slash district office group employee was Miss Boyce. Our volunteer was Maya Trout. In the high school, there's always three students, distinguished first, future first citizen, Shark Zhao. Distinguished community builder was Clyde Oglesby. And distinguished emerging first citizen was Alyssa Johnson. So I just wanted to congratulate those folks really quickly. And then lastly, since, you know, since the mask mandate went away just right before spring break, we've been working on as administrative team and with the associations and staff to start out with the draft, and we're probably version thirty-six now. It has the yellow piece of paper in front of you. You were even making tweaks this morning, that's why it wasn't included in your board packet. My plan will be to share this with all district staff, probably after the board meeting tonight. I'll send them an email with a detachment, let them know if they have any questions, talk to their building administrator. So I wanna get out, out to them for, you know, eighteen, twenty-four hours before I put it out to the community tomorrow. And this will start next Monday. To summarize, it just gives a path for volunteers in the building, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, visitors in the building, again, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, to be in compliance with the law. You know, we need to do extra things for unvaccinated folks. What the law specifically says is that schools that grant, so let's say Gary's a parent and I wanna volunteer, they'll need to do a medical religious exception. Now, schools that grant a medical religious exception to the vaccination requirement then must take reasonable steps to ensure that unvaccinated teachers, staff, or in this case, volunteers are protected from contracting this spreading COVID. Our plan will be for someone that's an unvaccinated person that wants to volunteer, it'll be just kind of like our staff members that are in both now that they're unvaccinated. There'll be four requirements. They wear masks, they don't eat around others, they self-screen that morning, meaning if they have symptoms, they stay home and they take a COVID test. So they can either take that test in the office, we have lots of tests, or bring us proof that they've had one in the last forty-eight hours. So those will be the four things on plans for those folks. So again, I wanna show this to you, get you any feedback. It took a lot of work to get here, but we've done that over the last month. Again, the final will be sheriff's staff today, community tomorrow. It would start on Monday, a week from today, we would start accepting, you know, volunteer forms or exception forms as soon as it goes out. The exception forms will go through the district office, the plans will be dealt with at the building level. They're all will be the same. The other thing I would say is about the masking, it's specifically for inside. So if I'm a parent volunteer, volunteering in a kindergarten classroom and I'm unvaccinated, I wear masks. We saw lots, you know, I wouldn't say lots, but probably fifteen to twenty percent of our staff and students still wear masks today, even though they're optional. So I think that is about it. On that side, any questions about what that might look like? Like I said, we'll start it next Monday, and outside, I guess that's what I wanted to slip in my mind. Outside, folks won't need to wear masks. If I'm in a classroom, I need to wear a mask. But I say I wanna volunteer, the track, you can run field day, it's all outside. I need to do those other things. I need to self-screen, have a test that day. I don't eat with the kids. But I don't need more masks outside. Okay, so without any feedback, like I said, that will get communicated over the next twenty-four hours to everyone, and it'll start on Monday. And that is all I have.
So we have the first meeting of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three calendar.
Yeah, Quan is up with here. You're still on Quan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so per board policy, we must adopt the next year's calendar no later than the May board meeting. So this is the first reading. You don't need to adopt it this meeting, but we would need to next month. It's pretty much normal. I did wanna note, spring break was moved up a week to align with the other districts and the county. As well as January second is considered a holiday this year because January first falls on a Sunday. So we moved that work sample day to September second, which is normally a non-contract day, and then made January second a non-contract day. I did wanna note, there on January third, on the January calendar, I was telling Michelle, I noticed this right before the board meeting. The third there where it says no schoolwork sample day, that should say the second, and it should say non-contract day, since we changed that. But other than that, it's pretty much identical to previous years. Our school day on September sixth, and we're out on June sixteenth. And winter break the last two weeks of December. Does anyone have questions on that?
Comment about the January third, and you already covered it, so.
Yep.
So that's just first reading. We'll, you know, get it out to staff. If they have any, we have a committee, I don't know, it'll take much more feedback, but if there's catching any problems or have questions, certainly be able to answer a lot of final circuit reading next month. Then we'll get it approved and then get it out to the community the next day.
So what's, what's up with the Oregon Department?
Oregon Department of Transportation. So a while back, I got sent these four folders of fun. And after a hundred and eighty-three emails between Michelle Smith and, and Mr., what was his name? Mr. Not very organized. We kind of, we'd have to figure it out, but you'll notice outside here, there's some pink flags across the way, on both sides of the street. There's also some in Benita, especially they're creating an easement. Uh, on both sides of the street, there's also some of the data, especially they're creating an easement and taking some of our property. You know, like, what is that, twenty four square feet, because they're widening the sidewalk and doing some things. So I read through them all, um, Quan and I signed them all in front of our, our fancy, um. Certified sign of person, Michelle Smith, uh, and, um, in short. Both here and at Venida, um, they're widening the sidewalks, making the, the access, uh, ramps more ADA accessible. Uh, wider slopes, doing different things, um, and then they're, they're paying the district. For example, what's this, all over like, you know, three hundred eighty seven dollars or a hundred eighty two dollars or six hundred and twelve dollars. Um, this one, this must be one of the more expensive ones, they're paying us fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, anyway, uh, it's, I kind of checked with a few other districts about the process that had something like this similar. It all makes sense, I'm saying, I've talked to the guy, uh, but does need more approval. To approve the Oregon Department of Transportation easement request to our district. Um, and they, they've already started the work, but they're waiting for these before they finish it.
So will. The easement in Venida require any change?
No, no change, no, no change to any of our current structures, electrical, um, anything.
Good. Uh, take a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the Oregon Department of Transportation easement request. Oh, second. It has been moved in seconded, any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. Four zero. Okay, uh, so now we're getting, we've got to the point where we're going to appoint, uh, a new board member. And I just want to thank all five of the applicants for the board position. For taking, not only taking the time to apply, but for taking the time to provide thoughtful answers to the questions. And although we can only appoint one person tonight. Um, I do hope that you all will continue to look for ways to serve not only the district, but the Punch Ridge community as a whole. Um, because it, it really is, it's not only satisfying. To you, but it provides so much to, uh, to the communities and. Um, it, it brings people together rather than. Uh, breaking them apart and, um. It's, it's definitely time for us to start going back to being a community that comes together and, um. Yeah, so thank you all for, for taking the time to apply. And with that, I will, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Lori Daniels to the, um, open board position number five.
Also. It has been moved in seconded, Lori Daniels, you appointed, is there any discussion? Well, then, um. All in favor of Lori Daniels, say aye.
Aye.
Three in favor and one abstaining. So, uh. The motion carries, three. The four, three out of four. Um. So Lori is not here tonight. Can, how are we?
Yeah, so we'll give the, like, the pass, and then I'll reach out, not tonight, tomorrow, so if the introductory board bug clip that I made four or five years ago. I'll refer him to us, video websites, some initial training stuff, set up a meeting. Um, you know, just to answer any questions, if I have it, I'll present it to you.
Okay. Uh, let's see, so we now have, uh, licensed employees, resignations, new hires, transfers and other.
You could combine them all in one motion if you wanted.
Okay.
I put them all, each one are aligned, but. Thirteen A one through thirteen A six.
I'll make a motion to, um. Uh, approve the hiring and resignations of the licensed employees as listed.
I'll second. Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor, I say aye. Four zero. Or you said, yeah.
I didn't say anything, I was reading something, so, yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, and then we have the non licensed personnel report that does not require. A board action. Looks great. And then, um. Last, on the list is the superintendent contract extension resolution, number twenty one dash twenty two slash oh seven. And that does require a board action.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve resolution number twenty one dash twenty two side zero seven as presented.
No, seconded. It has been moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
It unanimous, four zero. And do we have any lead items or closing comments? Okay, well then. Meeting adjourned, and the board is coming and, and staying.